Board meeting. David Austin is excused, but he may be joining us on Zoom. First thing to do is approve the meeting minutes from last month. We paid a few bills. We extended the SH-29 Westneck LLC lot line adjustment. We extended the Bloom Minor Subdivision. We approved the Reish Wetlands application. We approved the SECRE resolution for the Westneck Creek cottages. And we extended the Sixth Daniel Lord Road, Three Borough Hall Lot Line Adjustment. We had a continued a public hearing for the Dunn Wetlands application, which we're continuing again this evening. And that's that took up most of the meeting. So does anyone have any questions about this?
The next meeting date is in September. Not sure what day it is, maybe the 15th.
This is last month's meeting. July, so the next date would be.
Oh, okay. So that could be changed too. Which July this is.
This is the July meeting minutes. We're in August for approving dates. It says that the next meeting is in August.
Got you.
Got you. I guess one other thing, the town board, town supervisor requested the planning board to go into executive session at the end of the meeting. Any other points, I think? So I make a motion to accept the July 9th planning board minutes.
I'll second that.
I'll say all in favor. We have three invoices here. First is for the Time Revue Media Group in the amount of $72.29. It's for the Tesoro Trust, which is at One Seagull Road. And we will have a public hearing September 10th. With the town board having changed the frequency notification, went from 10 days to 30 days. This application was pushed off until September for the public hearing. Here's $72.29, the Shelter Round reporter. It's mandatory, so I make a motion to accept the reporter invoice for $72.29.
I'll second.
All in favor? We can now since have two invoices from the Rayner Group, because they're nice enough to break it down for us. For the month of July, the first is $2,103.75. Oh, that's the total. For subdivisions, that's $1,938.75. For work on Westneck Creek, Sixth Daniel Lord Road, Three and Five Borough Hall, the Found and Shearer, and attending a meeting. Very helpful to us, so I make a motion to. Okay, the second invoices was for $165 for wetlands permits. And that was related to the Tesoro Trust to review the revised map and prepare new memo. Very helpful to us, so I make a motion to accept the Rayner Group invoices in the amount of $2,103.75 for the month of July.
Second.
All in favor? We have invoices from EHA for services rendered in July totaling $2,165.62. It was for work on the Reish Wetlands application. And the Sixth Borough Lane Extension Resolution corresponds with Karen Ho regarding the Dunn application and attending a meeting. So 7.7 hours and with the municipal discount, $2,165.62. Very helpful, couldn't do without it. So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for the month of July. All in favor? We have one extension resolution. Karen Ho requested one more extension so that she can file the maps and get proof of recording. They're almost done with this application, but they need the one additional resolution. This will be resolution number 26 of 2024. And it will take them to September 8th. Very straightforward, we've done many of these before. So I make a motion to accept the SH-29 Resolution Number 26 of 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So now on to public hearings. For the Dunn Wetlands application at 18 and 20 Tuttle Drive. It's continued from May 14th and June 11th. Would anyone care to speak for this application?
Ian, Matt Sherman here. Excuse me, I'm sorry I wasn't there in person, but I'm here on behalf of Charles Dunn, who's in the audience. If I could just, just a real quick recap. This is the third hearing on this application. And in essence, it's a, just under a one acre piece of property on Tuttle Drive. Existing single-family dwelling with a detached garage is being removed partially within the vegetative buffer. And also within the adjacent regulated area. It's being replaced with a new building, accessory building, a new principal dwelling, accessory building, swimming pool, patio, things along those lines, typical residential improvements. All of the new work is outside of the vegetative buffer. The closest is just over 76 feet from the onsite bulkhead, excuse me. So the new work complies with the setbacks as required. This, this hearing is basically because of the late submittal that we had at the last hearing. Some of the people on the board, some of the people in the audience had asked for some time to go over and digest the new plans. So that's why we're, that's why we're here tonight. So if you have any questions on those new plans, anything that we haven't touched already or that you'd like us to touch on again, we'd be more than willing to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Anyone on the board have a question?
No, they're just, they're reducing the patio and the adjacent regulated area by what's 150 foot feet. So yeah, that's plus.
Let's go through the public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions for us? Or for the applicant? Anyone on Zoom have any questions? So, so no questions, so I make a motion to close the Dunn Wetlands application. For a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Good, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. That ends our business meeting. And we go on to our work session. The Bloom Minor Subdivision, they have until January 14th to submit their final application. We just extended SH-29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustment. They have to proof of filing the plat now till September 8th. Sixth Daniel Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. I think we're saying thing, waiting on final plats. And you have successive applicant here until August 23rd, 2024 to file that. If you'd like to speak to.
Hi, good evening. John Wagner, Satilman Ballin, Hunter Moore Parkway, Hupar, New York for the applicants. We made quite a bit of changes to the plat that was before the board. It would simplify it for purposes of reporting county. With them, the less that's shown as confusing is the better. So we've stripped down quite a bit. I'm going to have to walk it through personally through the county center to have them check it over before I submit a signature because I have a concern particularly about the fact that the county changed the tax map numbers on this in response to the recording of the deeds to effectuate the land transfer. They saw the deeds come in, they decided to create new tax parcels to reflect what the deeds were doing. So there's now a discrepancy between what's on the approved plan and the new tax parcels. So that's something I have to talk through with them to make sure that everything's not the copacetic on that. But probably will take me another two weeks to get over this stuff.
Okay.
So I respectfully request a verbal extension if you don't mind.
Okay. Do you mind just sending in a quick note to the facts? So we have something for the record?
Yes.
The Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Adjustment, we're waiting on maps, deeds, I think. It says maps, I think we're still waiting on the deeds for that November 10th.
Can I interject real quick on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Remember, the properties already exist, so the deeds already exist in their current state. It's what you guys have approved. This application was just to basically formally legalize through the planning board, the lot line change that had previously occurred in the, over the course of a couple of different iterations in the 80s and 90s.
Correct, you're right. You're right. So we're just waiting on a map update.
I'm not even sure you're waiting on that.
You're bringing us a map for signature to record with the county.
Okay. Okay, yep, I'll get that to you. Okay, thanks.
R and B of Shelter Round LLC Radigan Lot Line Adjustment, waiting of proof of filing, they have until December 10th. Westneck Creek Cottages LLC Subdivision, waiting on client's plan update. Matt, do you have anything new on that? Do you know where they're going with their?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're submitting to you guys, to the DEC, into the Health Department with that, that map showing a little bit more park area on the southerly lot, the larger lot than on the northerly lot. So I'll get you guys a copy of that so that you can do your secret determination and do what you need to do and then move forward on your end.
We did the secret determination last month. Are we gonna have to update? Do we have to update her the new plan? And that's a question to Joe and Beth.
So they're submitting a new plan to depict the new park area, right?
The first one had a park avenue, avenue completely separate. From the other two, they were had a vote for HOA. That's the plan we reviewed for SECRE.
Right.
It really doesn't change much in the overall environmental review.
Right.
It's just that they needed the SECRE to go to the Health Department and move on. So now that they're changing the map, does the, does the secret determination have to reflect the new map? Or is it basically standard for the project as it stands?
I think it would have to be.
Yeah, because it needs to match the.
It's gonna match the map.
Right.
All right, Matt, so please get us the updated plats and we'll, we'll do that next week, next month. Three and five Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We received Joe's memo on this. Oh, Mr. Wagner?
Hello again. So on this one, I've read the engineer's memo. It seems pretty straightforward. I would ask that you reschedule public hearing on it. I did want to address a couple of points that Mr. Lloyd made. He mentioned the scenic easement and also the vegetative buffer and whether they should be extended beyond where they really already fall on. Scenic easement is part of the package that we submitted for the application as a recorded document. It was established at the time the Borough Hall subdivision was put through. And it's evident from the language in scenic easement that it was designed and placed to primarily prevent a dock being established on that number five Borough Hall parcel that would serve as a community dock for the entire subdivision. It was explicit that that area was to be restricted just to the use of that particular homeowner. It was not to be used for homeowners association or for any communal dock. So that was the purpose of it. I think that that was applicable when that lot was part of the subdivision. But we're now, as far as the slot line adjustment posing now, we're adding additional acreage that was not part of that subdivision. So I don't see any reason to extend what's already there. It's, it's of records there. It probably still serves the same purpose as it was intended to. Regarding to the vegetated buffer, that's, that's part of the nearshore residential overlay district regulations anyway. So we're already regulating that regard about the 75-foot buffer. So I don't, I submit that we don't really need to make any changes to what we already submitted. In addition to asking for the public hearing, I would appreciate if the board could adopt a resolution determining this to be a type two action under SECRE. Purpose of that is we'd like to get our Health Department application going. It's already filed and they typically ask us for a SECRE determination before they will proceed. So if we could get a resolution of type two, that would fit the bill for that particular ask. You have any questions?
No, I don't think so. I want to go with Joe through the memo, his memo first. Joe, do you mind walking us through your memo briefly?
Three Borough Hall Lane Parcel. Notice lot one on this lot line application. It was just recently created as a result of a lot line modification between the Three Borough Hall Lane and Daniel, Sixth Daniel Lord Road. So a portion of that lot is now going to be transferred to Five Borough Hall Lane.
Which is lot two.
Which is, yeah, lot two on this map. Both lots comply with the A Residence Zone District. Both lots have frontage on Westneck Creek. Mr. Wagner spoke about the 50-foot scenic easement and the 75-foot shoreline buffer. So it's up to the board if they want to see those extended.
That's just a mapping issue, right?
Yeah. It's not going to make a difference. The other thing is all of this. Lot two is improved with several structures. None of them are particularly labeled except for sanitary system. And they're shown as dashed. I don't know if the board would want to have those shown. It's solid lines and labeled as what the structures are. The Health Department is going to want to see that. But, you know, neither the structures or the scenic easement issues, those are something that can be addressed on the final application or final map that gets signed by the chairman. There's no reason that the board can't consider having a public hearing, scheduling a public hearing for this application.
Mr. Wagner, the, the house and the pool and the garage that are dashed, are they is future or are they current that you're removing?
They are now.
And they're being demolished?
They probably will be, yes. One of the reasons we're enlarging this old lot.
So Joe, you're saying they should be shown?
Well, I think they should be shown or they should be labeled to be removed, especially when you go to the Health Department. The Health Department is going to want to see that. And that would probably result in a covenant by the Health Department saying that they have to be removed before the lot can be transferred. And by labeling them to be removed, it may also help you with the Health Department because they may want that sanitary system certified and updated to meet current standards, which would be an IA system. If you, if these structures are actually going to be removed, you may want to add that information on the map, especially the one that goes to the Health Department.
The other question I had is, you mentioned some tax numbers from the previous application. Is this application affected by that tax number? Tax number update that's pending?
I believe on this one, we're using the current, the new current numbers that they've signed. So that's one of the features on the new map. We had those numbers available at the time and have been through this one up.
So this reflects the new numbers and the, so our resolution has to be updated, our final resolution has to be updated with the new numbers for the previous.
If you think that's necessary, I think that at the point that you pass that resolution, the numbers were correct.
We wouldn't have to update their approval of the.
Okay.
But when we do the notice for this, we'll use the new number.
Okay. I just want to make sure everything is because it seems like you're juggling that.
No, no, you don't, you don't have to go back in time.
Would we set up public hearing or do the SECRE first? Or we do them concurrent?
I mean, it's a type two action, so.
So we would just as, as we notice for the public hearing, call it a type two action and that should be sufficient instead of us.
You could do it the same resolution.
Yeah, I'll do it in the same.
Except for, except for public hearing and declaring it type two.
I'm comfortable with setting a public hearing with you guys.
That's fine.
I tend to agree with what Joe has on. Everything should be accurate.
Well, that can be done in the final plats at that. But I think we're okay for setting a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, the next one is the Defoe Shearer Lot Line Adjustment. Joe, you put together a memo for us on that one. Do you mind walking us through it?
These are two parcels that are under John Westneck Harbor. And they're on the easterly side of Grand, East Grand Parkway and southerly side of North Silver Beach Road. So one of the parcels is a corner lot. They're in the, they are 40 zoning, I'm sorry. District A, which requires 40,000 square feet from the nearshore overlay district. Neither lot conforms with the minimum lot area in the district. There's a small triangular shaped sliver that's being transferred from the Shearer Parcel to Christine and Catherine Defoe. The transfer would increase the degree of nonconformity on the Shearer Parcel and decrease the degree of nonconformity to both parcel. Both lots are approved with structures and residences existing as we structured. The, the, the map indicates that 933 square feet will be transferred. However, when you run through the numbers, it doesn't match. Just by doing, just, you know, looking at the existing area adding up for the Defoe Parcel and adding 933, it doesn't come up with what the proposed lot area is. And the same thing for the Shearer Parcel. When you subtract the 933, doesn't come out to what they're reporting the lot to be. I, you know, entered this, the triangular shaped sliver into our engineering program and it comes out as 933. So that number seems okay. But it's just these other numbers that have to be cleaned up a little bit. But I think that that should be done prior to having a public hearing on the map.
Matt, I see you're on the call.
Yeah.
Is that something you can update?
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk to the surveyor and see where those numbers deviated and get them to correct that. And we'll get you a new revised stamp survey on that.
Sounds great. And then we can set the public hearing next month.
Yeah, absolutely. Good, thank you.
Thank you. The next item, which I, Karen Hoog is here. The white performance bonds, I have a meeting with Stephen Kylie. And I believe Amber, you're going to be part of it tomorrow to review steps for the town board to go through. So we'll have some more information tomorrow and then maybe we'll in the very near future.
Great, thank you.
Other businesses, other business items. The Wetlands Code Committee met a couple of weeks ago. And they're proceeding, it seems like the draft being presented to, it is being presented to the town board, follows all the things that we thought were very good before with the one item that the, just not allowing any more new expansion in the 100 square foot setback, 100 linear foot setback. I know we were against that. I can't support the new. I can support every component of the wetlands changes. I just can't support the one item because it's, it just seems to me that it's a happy-go-lucky number and not based on exact science. I don't know where you guys feel, but this is now the special committee reviewing this is done and it's in the hands of the town board. Have you set a public hearing for this?
Not yet.
So that's where that stands. I forwarded you the site plan review code, which was the original code from 2019. And I don't know, did you guys get a chance to look at it? Because the town board's been asking for comments on it. Do you guys have any questions, any thoughts? You want to put them in writing and send them to me and then I'll accumulate something? You know, I'm happy with the text. It was something we put together many years ago. It was town law for a while. You guys want more time to think about it? Yeah.
I had some notes, but I want to fix them up. I just found the map, but I want to fix them up. I can have them ready for next, definitely. But it's actually this, I just noted in my notes that it's very, it's the same draft that you had previously.
Right.
I'm familiar with that one, actually. I'm familiar with that one, actually.
All right, so I'm just going to ask you guys to please look through it.
You say the town board is anxious to start moving forward and updating all the documents because we're going to have some site plan applications coming. We'd like to have it updated.
Under Wetlands, Wetlands Permit Applications, we'll have the Tesoro One Seagull Road on a public hearing next month. Just concluded the Dunn eighteen and twenty title drive public hearing and where do you guys stand on this? Do you think it's something you want to move ahead with?
When we first looked at it, there were things we asked them to do to change and they basically accommodated that. So there's no expansion and they're basically tougher. They're removing everything out of the budget. And they thought doing expansion in the adjacent area. But recently they cut seven hundred and fifty square feet of the decking, so it's admirable. Now people complain about the house size, but they're within town code size.
I mean, I think it complies with the code as I understand it. Even though it's as big as it is and it doesn't necessarily fit in mesh with existing fabric, it meets town code. So I'll be, why don't I go through the typical points? Proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function and value of the wetlands and buffer. They're pulling it out outside of that shade buffer. They're putting in stormwater collection and they're updating the sanitary system, the IA sanitary system. So those are all possible. The proposed project will not diminish any wetlands in size unless the approving authority finds that the proposed activity is water-dependent or requires access to the wetlands as a central element of its basic function and will result in a minimum possible alteration or impairment of the wetlands. I think this is way back as a retaining wall. It's currently manicured land with some trees. I don't think what is being proposed, it's less pulling it away from the water, so I think if that's not the case. Proposed project will not have a significant impact on the quality, quantity or quality of the groundwork.
Putting in IA system.
IA system is improvement. I think I would ask for a five gallon per minute well or whatever, it's hour well, minute. The proposed project will not create a net increase of risk, in the risk of runoff. They're putting in stormwater, water dry wells. The only thing that we may want to consider and I leave it to you guys is if you want to, since there is a lot of patio, a lot of terracing, to put in trench drains and piping those to dry wells to again reduce the risk of runoff. Is that something you guys would like to entertain?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So Beth, we'd like to see the patios with stormwater collection. The applicant has submitted information to describe alternate site locations and configurations sufficient for determination of the proposed working location would have a less adverse environmental impact than any other applicable alternative in order for it to be approved. They're right up against the front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and they've pulled away from the water. I don't know how anything could be moved any further. We did discuss one special condition we wanted, which was if for any reason the merger of the two lots seems
I was going to ask you about.
invalid, that the, that this resolution becomes null and void.
Can we do that, Beth? Do you remember having some?
Yes, okay.
So our approval would be contingent on.
Well, we'd approve it and then.
And then if it happens, it's.
If for some reason in the future it's determined that the merger was, it's out of our jurisdiction.
We didn't get any further information?
Just a letter that he leaves us.
That last thing from last?
That was the last thing we received on.
He, I emailed him also. He said, okay, merged.
Nothing from Stephen Kiley?
What's that?
Nothing from Stephen Kiley?
No, I think just, I think the best, he verbally said to me, you know, just put it in that condition with work. Trevor's the planning board. Nothing new on Chief Wood Ave LLC, Seven Chief Wood Avenue, application that I know of. Wetlands Permit Reviews, Lopez at sixty-four Gardiner's Bay Drive. Has the town board determined that's complete? Not yet.
We changed all of the curvings, so we don't say it here.
Hopefully you will tell us it's complete and we write the letter before you set up a hearing. So the last item on here is the Perlman Music Program Special Permit Application. This is a site plan review application being run by the town board and we are being asked to take a look at it. And you guys have seen it. In specific, we are asked to look at the interior circulation and parking. If we need to consult with the town engineer, we can do so. Landscaping and screening, and that's both for the CAC and us to review. And the existing development comprehensive plan and prior stipulations. I'm actually not quite sure what that means. Existing development comprehensive plan and prior stipulations.
That's a good question.
Is it in line with the comprehensive plan? The, I don't know what the previous stipulations are. When that went through, what stipulation was put in? That was like thirty years ago. Yeah.
There's also the building department's purview on that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess we're looking at landscaping, screening and interior circulation and parking. I printed out the landscape plans and they're not the type of landscaping plans we're familiar with. They're just a photograph, aerial photograph with some more definition, but they're not per se giving us any. It's a site plan with some green on the sheet. It's not to say a landscape plan showing what's going to be, what plants are proposed or.
There's nothing specific.
There's nothing at all that we can actually review. So I don't know how to answer that.
Can we get the plans that we usually get, like the typical style?
Can we request of Perlman to give us the actual landscaping plans out of just?
It's just like, you know, it's just.
I'll do that then tomorrow. And then as far as internal circulation, I think we have to go through it more particularly in regards to what the code requires and number of parking spots and whether we're going to consider event parking. Right now, a lot of people park on Sterns Road and Shore Road. And I can see that beats with.
That's not a long-term solution.
Yeah, so I think there's got to be some more onsite event parking.
Should Joe review the parking?
So this is really, since the town board's running the site plan review, this is really for the town engineer. So Joe Fanaro would be involved. So we have until the, I think the.
Did you do a memo or anything regarding?
This is the first one the town board's handling, so, in a full review style. It's the twenty-sixth of August. You ready, you had the first public hearing on the fifth, but you're extending it to the twenty-sixth. Okay. So I'm going to ask all of us to look at, I'll briefly speak to Joe, but look at the code, look at the circulation and parking. And we'll put something together before your next.
Yeah, we extended to the twenty-sixth and then once everyone gets a look at it, if they have questions, we can ask them.
That makes sense.
Thanks for your community.
Okay.
Shouldn't the board be discussing what their decision at a meeting? And if you're getting a landscaping plan, shouldn't you review, should be.
Yeah, I think, I think we're just going to have to ask you guys to keep it open. Again, I presume there's so many questions that are needed. I would continue to be open.
I do not see it closing.
You guys seem very glum. We're going to see those, that few days.
No, it's going to be a longer process.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understood from our preliminary meeting. Because it's a, it's, it's a really great project. It's just very complex and it takes a while to wrap one's head around. I think the real limiting factor on this is going to be Health Department and all those Health Department rules. I know they think they can get it rapidly, but.
I think also if the board, if this board has to make comments on the parking, there should be, or maybe you can request some opinions or some sort of memo or information from the town engineer to provide them with some information, a review to just see if he sees any issues. That would be helpful, I think, for the board.
End up in the. Okay. So that's all I have on the special permit application and for the meeting. But I see Stella has a question.
Stella Lagooda is from Shelter Island Heights Property, her score. My first question is, what? You said there's nothing new on Seven Chief Wood LLC? And what does authorized coordinated review mean? What are you waiting for? Is this like a corso report?
We're waiting for the updated EAF.
Okay.
And information from the applicant.
Okay.
In order to schedule then coordinated review for secret purposes.
Okay, and then once you get that, what is the next step as far as the planning board is concerned?
Then the board can schedule coordinated review, coordinate review for secret purposes.
Okay, and then so.
Before you keep going, do I, should I step out at this point?
To be safe.
As the, yeah, architect of the app.
We don't need a conflict or appearance of conflict.
So the intention is for the planning board to retain this application, even though it's been nullified by the court?
No, the court sent it back to the board to review, so that's what we're doing.
Right, but since then, you've got new plans, you've got a new site.
It's the town's, it's the town's opinion that it's, it's, we're taking our directive from the court. The court sent it back to us and that's what we're doing. We're reviewing it. How the court sent it back to us.
Okay, so the fact that it's got an expired notice of disapproval from the building department, the building department has not reviewed the new plans that were put in. All these changes that make it a new application that should go to a new jurisdiction. None of this means anything.
We're taking our directive from the court.
Thanks for taking the questions.
Is there been an official request of the court to update their order, their ruling to redirect it?
Yes, there has been.
It hasn't been acted on, but there's been a request, correct? Are you guys still talking about this?
Don't worry.
It's okay. As I said before, that's all I have, so unless anyone has anything for us, I'm going to motion to close the August thirteenth planning board meeting. About a second?
Second.
On a favor? Thank you, everyone.